Thank you all and welcome to June 3. Already June. I'm here for this evening. You can start with the public comment on the agenda items. If anybody has any questions. Yes?
Just for the record, please, name and address.
Pat Mitchell, a ten-year-old place, just about the trees. I gave him a check over a month ago and it hasn't been canceled.
Yeah.
I'm concerned about that.
We have the checks.
Okay.
Everything is there.
We'll pay him after sixty days.
What we've been just trying to do is arrange a Saturday to, or, you know, the week to pick them up. And I think right now I have it on the, obviously it's on the agenda for the, for June twenty-second to do the plantings. So that would be, you know, the time that we'll do it. I'm sorry?
I need you to deposit my check.
Oh, okay. Okay, don't spend the money. Okay.
Said no one ever.
We'll do that.
Mr. Mayor, this is Bill Graber, Washington Boulevard. If I could just add to that, I don't know how you take the excess funds that the village has and overnight invest them or what you do with them. But I too, like I sent my water bill in weeks and weeks ago. Still hasn't cleared. Now, I'm not saying that, you know, I need you to take the money from me immediately, but...
I can answer that.
If the funds are in your hands, you should have them doing some work.
Sure.
I can answer that. I was out a couple of days, so I did get backed up. As of Sunday, everything that had been received through Sunday has been deposited.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other agenda items?
Just a question, how many trees have been donated? Nancy Donaldson.
I think we're in a new...
Four Emerson Drive.
I'm sorry?
Nancy Donaldson, Four Emerson Drive.
Okay. On the last count, I think we were possibly about ten, ten trees? So, well, yeah.
It's all going in.
So they will, you know, be going in on Ahern Boulevard between Newcastle and Winchester. We've already planted one, I, you know, we already reported from the Girl Scouts, that was four seventy-five. So that tree's been planted and will continue going, you know, towards Memorial Park.
Are they gonna be watered?
Yes. Yep, they're being watered like everything else every other day.
It's a hot time to plant.
Yeah, I'm gonna check with the, with the landscaping or the owner of the tree company and see if it is. And, you know, maybe potentially we'll catch the checks and we'll hold on to everything until, you know, potentially just getting into the fall. Because we don't want to damage the trees. So if we have to wait, you know, a couple of months, we'll just wait a couple of months. Because there's a bunch of activities going on. I think the following weekends, you have high school graduations are going on. So, you know, we might just hold off and look at early September at that point. We'll also be doing, on a side note, Trees for Tribes, which we'll be doing at Sewell Park where the New York State basically comes in with trees and plants to support the wildlife and trees and things along, stream beds. So that'll be also going on. We just need to pick a date. I emailed her, so we're just waiting to see what they have on their calendar as far as availability is concerned. But that again will be over at Sewell Park. Anything else?
John Donaldson, Four Emerson. What was the work going on in the middle of the village today on two oh eight ninety-four? You know, they had one lane out and they would...
Um, well, we're just taking care of agenda items right now, John, I'm not...
All right.
That's okay. Well, you said, you know...
The state, the state was doing, state DOT were doing...
Oh, okay. Chris, it wasn't anything we were doing, correct?
No, that's...
So that'd be the state. Yep. Anything else? All right, so we'll begin with our announcement discussion. So as we just started to talk about the tree program, we're looking at June twenty-second. But again, we'll check with the landscaping owner over there, his name is Joe, and see timing-wise if it's a little bit too late or the season's a little bit too warm to be planting the trees. So we'll get back to you on that. Update on VST auditors, financial audits. He's already started twenty twenty-two. There will be, he's been invited to come down at our next meeting on the seventeenth to do a presentation on where we currently are with the budgets, audited and unaudited and deficit, this deficit situation that he has been working on. And Leslie will also be here, our treasurer. So that will be for our next meeting in June. Also with that, there is a, another, let's see, do they have their name on here, Christine? No. The, the name of the auditing firm. So we have another firm that does and basically is an accounting firm that looks at the retirement status of our accounts, making sure potentially enough money is being taken and just making sure all accounting rules are being standard, uh, being followed by the General Accounting Standard Board. So that's their part of looking at the retirement system.
Their name, Tom, is Danfinker and Markwell.
Okay, thank you. Great. There'll be more to come on that. There's another additional audit. We need to do a resolution on that a little bit later. Just an update on the Lions Club for the Memorial Park. We have been working with the state on our grant for a hundred twenty-five thousand dollars. They have, the Lions Club has done a great job in getting the, some of the equipment already ordered for the expansion of the playground. And so we're just waiting on a person from the state to get back to us on our last responses and questions that they had in regards to the park itself. We kind of fell behind a little bit because we had a representative, he left, they put somebody else in charge. So we're kind of starting a little bit from the beginning with this guy, getting him up to speed on where things are. So we do have a couple of pieces of equipment that we'll be meeting with Chris and DPW to get, I think it's one or two pieces installed within the next couple of months. Update on Sewell Park, it's moving along, but currently we're discussing things with FEMA. They have stepped in, part of the process, I guess, but part of what they're, part of what they're doing is making sure that we're, what they describe as a no-rise elevation. So there's FEMA maps, there's Army Corps of Engineer maps, and every piece of land for GSI has some type of elevation. So they're looking at us and looking at the area to make sure that the floodway and floodplains will not be affected by us creating this park. We've given them the plans, we've given them everything that they need, it's just in the hands of FEMA at the moment. And, and in turn, they've given us some information saying that we would need a hydrologist or somebody of that caliber to give them a report to basically say the elevations of three oh five, three oh eight that's on that property will, will be maintained and that there'll be no increase of substantial amount of dirt that would rise it up to another level that would be inappropriate for FEMA. So that's where we are with Sewell Park at the moment. The veterans banners, the order has been placed after a couple of, we've gone back and forth on a couple of discussion points on the proofs with spelling of names and things along those lines. So that should be coming, there were twenty-one that were submitted on the first wave. We expect to have a few more on a second wave. And again, this is a program that will maintain and keep open. We've also made application to Orange and Rockland, and they have given us the authority to move forward and hang the banners on the poles that we have identified as, that what we'd be using for the banners. So that was very good news. It was very, not a real lengthy process, it was just a matter of cataloging all the telephone poles and getting them the information, insurance, et cetera. So that's moving forward in good shape. Our pickleball courts, some work is actually started today. And depending on weather, they'll be, you know, starting to do the painting of the surface. And it takes a number of days to do multiple coats as it dries, et cetera. So as soon as it's ready, we're bringing in the fence guy, he's ready to go to complete the internal fencing between the courts. We already have the nets, the, for the courts, so as soon as everything that gets done, we'll install. And it'll be open. So hopefully, I would say, within two weeks, weather-dependent, that the courts will be open and usable. So, and we're also looking at the lights and wiring from telephone poles, that stuff has been there for many years. The lights are not functional, so we do have a quote and we're just working on some other quotes to see what, what kind of costs are coming back. Currently, we're at about, I think, a twenty-two thousand dollar number, doing wiring from the biometal poles, fixing all the outlets, repairing all the GIs and all that good stuff, and then as well as the lights that will be on the poles. So that's roundabout the number that we got from the one company, a written quote. So we're just working on another one or two to see what we can get for that. And then we'll have, you know, lights to a certain amount of time in the evenings and it'll be lit with a timer. So we'll be in pretty good shape with that. Our police department, our chief is not with us this evening, but we did get further information on the DCJS enforcement technology grant of the ninety-nine thousand five hundred dollars, that's moving along. The chief has signed some additional paperwork commencing it, and now we're just waiting for some timelines of when that check will be available for our police department. That's really good news. Chief did a great job on that. Also, we have a Crest grant preliminary application for generators for the Department of Works building and the Village Hall. That number came in at about eighty-two thousand dollars for installation. Paperwork will be sent up tomorrow. We need to do a resolution today for the board because we, as the village, will be responsible for putting in the concrete pad for the generators as per the specs of whoever gets the bid at that particular time. So again, that'll be another grant. Because this building is used for as a warming center, it's also can be utilized for, you know, disasters and if we need a place for people to come, you know, that's the, you know, we have the ability to do that down here. And we have obviously some space upstairs that we could also, you know, take care of people bedding and whatnot in case of a disaster. Most of the times, depending on where it is and what's going on, we've utilized half school for the most, most part. And back in the day, it was Grace Church that always stepped up to the plate and helped out tremendously with the space, food and stuff. So that was, so that's what we're doing on end end. Also, we made an announcement just a little bit ago, Orange County, the Mobile DMV unit will be here on Wednesday. Normal times, ten in the morning to twelve. And they take an hour lunch, and then from one to three, they'll be back on, back on the campus here, located pretty much behind the building. So, is that anything else from board members, anything else to do? All right, so with that, we'll jump into the resolutions. Oh, there they are. Yeah, thank you, I think it's up here. So the resolution twenty-four dash zero zero six five, authorize the mayor to execute the memorandum of agreement with the Laborers International Union of North America Local Seventeen for the Department of Public Works. Let me see the resolution. So with that, I'll just ask for a motion.
Motion.
Second. So the resolution is to authorize the mayor to execute the memorandum of agreement with the Laborers International Union North America Local Seventeen for the Department of Public Works. Employees, whereas the village, Washingtonville, and the Labor International Unions of America's Number Seventeen Union have negotiated terms of the successor collective bargaining agreement contained in the memorandum of agreement, MOA, and whereas the current collective bargaining agreement, CBA, between the village union expired on February twenty eighth, twenty twenty-four. Whereas the bargaining committees of the village and the union have engaged in appropriate negotiations for the successor, CBA, and whereas the expired agreement shall be modified as set forth in the annexed agreement, I'm sorry, annexed memorandum of agreement, and whereas the village desires to approve the MOA and authorize the village mayor to execute the MOA set forth herein. Therefore, be resolved section one, the areas clause are incorporated herein by reference. Section two, the village board hereby approve the memorandum of agreement and authorize the mayor to execute the memorandum of agreement in form acceptable to village legal counsel. Section three, the village mayor and any official employee or consultant as directed by the village mayor is authorized to take any and all necessary actions to carry out the provisions of this resolution. Section four, this resolution shall be effective immediately. The question of adoption for foregoing resolution was duly put to a vote on roll call results as follows. Trustee Coleman?
Aye.
Trustee pressure is absent this evening. Trustee Waltski?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Donna?
Yeah.
Jekarusso? And myself, yes. Motion passes four zero one. Thank you very much. The next resolution, twenty-four zero zero six six, resolution to authorize Danza here in Markwell, LLP, to conduct, conduct the fiscal year end twenty twenty-three, GASB number seventy-five actuarially valuation report in the amount of four thousand four hundred and fifty dollars. And for the fiscal year ending twenty twenty-four, GASB number seventy-five actuarially valuation report in the amount of two thousand two hundred and twenty-five dollars, a fifty percent discount. Have a motion, please? Run a motion, have a second?
Second.
Second. Any questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes forward. Zero one, okay. Thank you. Next is resolution twenty-four zero zero six seven, resolution to authorize the mayor to execute community resilience, economic sustainability and technology grant, Crest preliminary application regarding generators for the Department of Public Works and Village Hall. The village DPW will be responsible for the preparation, installation of concrete pads which generator per contractor specs not to exceed twenty thousand, which will help reduce external costs. Have a motion, please?
Sure.
Run a motion, second?
Second.
Second. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes forward zero one. Excuse me, one second. Oh, on the resol, okay. All right, next is twenty-four zero zero six eight, resolution to amend resolution twenty-four zero zero six zero, passed at the May twenty twenty-four Village Board Work Session Meeting, authorizing the promotion of Carl Burke and John Page to the position of Department of Public Works, working leaders effective Monday, May twentieth, twenty twenty-four. The amendment will reflect the start date of the promotion of Carl Burke and John Page, the position of Department of Public Works, working leaders will be effective Thursday, May twenty-third, twenty twenty-four. Motion?
Motion.
Motion, second? Run it on the second. Uh, this was due to coordinate the beginning of the pay period, just for logistics. Okay. Any questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes four zero one. Resolution twenty-four zero zero six nine, to authorize budget transfers and amendments as necessary to affect necessary transfers of funds and to pay warrants. Motion?
Motion.
Run a motion, second?
Second.
Excuse me, on the second. Any questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes four zero one. Hey, Chris, I have a correction on the resolution, I think. The February twenty-eighth, that was my attention, but I've run, should be twenty twenty-three, not twenty twenty-four.
Is that for the ARB resolution?
No, that's for the memorandum of, for DPW.
Got it.
Their contract expired twenty twenty-three.
Got it.
Anyone make a motion, just, would that accept a change or...
That's fine.
Okay. All right, so just to amend our last resolution to change the date from February twenty eighth, twenty twenty-four to February twenty eighth, twenty twenty-three. Have a motion, please?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes four zero one. Thank you. Thanks for your attention. All right, now we're at public comment, if anyone has anything. Benny?
Benny, I have to talk for a couple of things. The DPW contract, how long was that for? At the same, for a percentage or...
I believe it's a three year.
I think it was three.
Do you have any percentages per year increase?
Yes.
For that work, do you know?
Yes.
I don't have those numbers with me. I'm glad to get them for you.
It'd be nice if it was included in the resolution, at least the public year of AR.
Off the top of my head, Benny, I don't want to speak off the top of my head because it's, different areas get different percentage of raises.
I know, you were that.
So, off the top of my head.
Yeah, that would, you know, that would, you know, exactly what we're hearing.
Sure.
Um, you mentioned the lights earlier for the park. That was getting asked, because I'm fixing lights. We'll take a walk or...
And we...
Are we gonna amend the E-code for park hours, sunrise to dusk? Because if we're not lights, we're not, you know, we're turning on the lights at night, so they can play through the night.
Well, they're not playing through the night, but they'll play the, I don't know, we need to...
Right now, the hours are dusk.
Right, I mean, when it was a roller hockey park, the park was potentially closed, but the kids were playing roller hockey. So I imagine this would be the same thing. We're not lighting up the playground areas, the lights are specifically for the pickleball area.
Some of the kids come down already, as it is.
Well, yeah, I mean, if people, you see something at, you know, nine o'clock or you see figures walking around there, then, you know, contact the police and we'll have somebody come out there. But it does close at dusk, except for, and maybe we'll need to amend it that we'll have something with, you know, regarding pickleball.
And the nights of Columbus, are they gonna reclaim the length of the grass down there?
They did. They put down soil and seed.
Because that, that one generator must have been leaking some serious diesel oil where it was sitting, because it's, it's like crap.
Would it, um...
It's right on the road, right on the road there, and you'll see it.
Okay. All right, we'll take a look, but they did, they did seed and put soil there. Because they had a truck nearby, when he was pulling off, he got close to the stream and, you know, put some big roots in, so they filled all that stuff in. But, yeah, thank you. We'll take a look at that.
But I have the MLU up with the percentage increases, if you want.
Okay, yeah.
Um, your number one is four percent, your number two is three percent, your number three is three point five percent.
Seems low, it deserves more.
What's that?
Seems low, I think it deserves a little bit more. Place is more dry.
I'll remember that the next negotiation. Email your comments. Five, six, whatever you want to give, I'm sure they'll take it, so. Yes?
Please? Shaun Egery for Bellwater Drive. Some questions, a roll question, when I spoke to Vern earlier about the stateboard park, is there anything going on with that?
We discussed it internally, and I believe it was like insurance issues with that, from us to...
Well, it's probably in bad shape the way it was dumped in the woods, that was ridiculous, the way that it was dumped, that was...
I remember we spoke at the post office.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The other thing is maintenance around the village. The, down by Burn Allen Park, there's a stream that runs through, and the children have a habit of throwing rocks, and maybe adult students. Good to watch a rock splash. But they always have the pipe going through, clogged. Somebody needs to take them out. So it might be a good idea when you take them out and put them back on top of the pipe, that they put either chicken wire or some kind of fencing over and stake it down, so everybody likes to throw rocks in the water.
Is this the fact coming underneath the bridge?
Yeah. No, 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 the little walkway.
Well, I mean, yeah, the little bridge, the walkway.
Which side? The side of the dog park or the other side?
The other side.
The other side.
So where the water flows through coming out?
Yeah, coming out, okay. No, so it's gotten worse over time, that whole one left to side where they took the riffraff or whatever you want to call it, riffraff. It's all gone, it's into the stream.
Okay.
Somebody needs to see that and say, this is maintenance, we gotta take this out. Now, every year I get the same thing over by the trailer park, I have to come in and say, why isn't the pump station being maintained? Unless they did it today, it wasn't maintained, they were just mowing, grass, looks like it's grown trees out of it. The roots get in, freezes in the winter, things start breaking up. Normally, every year I come in and say, that's why, last time I was in here, Tom, the DPW said he only does what he's told. You need to tell him to do more.
Well, he doesn't necessarily let...
That was his statement, not mine.
Yeah, so, I mean, at the end of the day, I'm not a dictator. He's a department manager, we all have department managers, and their job is to follow through and make sure stuff is done.
Correct.
They drive around and they see things, they create the tickets in our IMC system, and, and they follow up. You know, if you see something, it's not that we're not seeing it, it's somebody else's eyes looking at something.
Well, I brought, I brought that in two weeks ago.
Okay.
And it was taken, still hasn't been done.
Yeah, I saw it the other day.
Right, so there's normal maintenance, you know, just like birds fly north when spring comes.
Yep.
Start cutting the grass, doing the manholes, doing everything.
Yep.
That's normal stuff, you shouldn't have to be told.
Right, and we're not. I mean, the other thing, the other thing is, and that was the reason to create these two lead positions, so we could split the DPW in half. So you have two teams being able to do different things, depending on the project. Now, all last week, for a good portion of last week, they spent it doing drainage pipe work on, on Lincoln Drive because we need to prep for, for that. Grass has been growing, as you know, crazy. They've been running around, taking care of all of that. We went around, we were patching holes.
Most of it, not all of it.
So, well, you can't, you got two guys, come on. You know, the worst thing that I would love to do, I would love to turn around, you've...
You're telling me there's only two guys cutting grass?
I'm sorry?
You're telling me there's only two guys cutting grass? I can go out and get a picture of four guys on the machine in the same lot, which, there's not a problem with that.
Depends on the day, that's all I'm saying, Shaun. We don't, we have a limited amount, if, listen, if everyone said everything done, then, you know, you're looking at a staff of maybe twenty.
I'm talking about normal maintenance.
Yeah, I know.
So...
Things that have happened every single year, it's potholes, it's mowing, it's watering the flowers, it's, they, they do everything. It's not we have a separate, you know, that's why, again, we, the thought is, we created these teams so that Chris can get out from underneath the day-to-day stuff and get these two leads to follow and do what needs to be done.
Well, I hope more gets done?
Yeah.
And for every one thing that you see is not getting done, there are fifty things getting done.
Now, I'll give you another thing. We planted about forty or fifty trees from Trees for Tribes in Sewell Park. What happened to eleven, did they just get...
They died.
Okay, so that was lack of maintenance, but that's before your time.
Yeah.
But that should have been DPW watering, they're supposed to be watering the plants. They did water all the other plants around the village.
And they watered Sewell Park flowers as well, and they're watering the tree that we planted.
Very good.
So at the end of the day, when this is done, we're gonna have, actually, we sat with the DEC, they're gonna give some app. And I was there the day that we did those plantings. And that was like digging into concrete.
It's quite...
It's garbage, it's garbage dirt. It came from the sewer plant. When they ran out of, or didn't know what the hell to do with it, they took dirt... When they ran out of, or didn't know what the hell to do with it, they took dirt from the sewer plant and then put it down there. They had a guy come in with a bulldozer to level it out and cover and get rid of that dirt and brought it there. And it's, potentially it's just garbage, right? So, the bottom, at the end of the day, what we're gonna do is get the map, know it's gonna get planted where. We're gonna bring in our organ the week, the day or so before we're gonna do. We'll know how deep to dig the holes based upon what we're doing. And then the plants will come, we'll have topsoil, and we'll try to help these trees and shrubs and flowers make it. Because I think when I was down there with her in the spring, I wanna say maybe there's six, if I had to throw a number of trees that survived. Everything else is gone. And it's it, but they're gonna come back and we're gonna do it again and hopefully.
They did that this time.
Yeah.
My last point is the floodway on the opposite side, that was never done, is anything getting done with that?
The floodway?
On the pond.
We looked at that, and at this point, we're not gonna touch it because it's operational, it's working.
It's not flooding. That is, reduce the amount of flooding, when you, if you fill that side in, it will have to go through the floodway.
It's going through.
You talked about a hydraulic engineer, you need him to look at that, or get the maps out from Rieger, and there are maps at the county.
We did have our engineer out there, I don't think you need, potentially hydrologist.
Well, if he says that's alright, what's his name? I'd like to speak to him.
You'd like to speak to him?
Yeah. What's his name?
Ford, Jim Ford.
Oh, okay. Makes sense. Thank you.
Yeah, well, we can giggle all day about engineers, I guess, right? Yes?
One of the meetings, I think it might have been the one we couldn't speak yet, you talked about getting sued sometimes.
I'm sorry?
Did the village get sued at times?
At times, yeah.
Are there any lawsuits going on right now, or?
Yeah, there's, sixty-one East Main filed suit before the hearing on the hardship application in federal court.
So what does that mean? Do we have to spend a lot of money for that?
So, insurance right now is covering it. I am not the litigator on that suit because insurance hired separate counsel for it. But the village's insurance carrier, who, who we know well, I'm sorry, the village's insurance carrier hired a firm that we know well and we've had good success with, with our other municipal clients in similar lawsuits involving more Toria.
Any other questions? Alright, Diane?
You cleaned out, thank you. The culvert.
Address, please.
The Iron Man, twenty-five Capital Drive.
Thank you.
The culvert that I asked you about between Dec- Capital and Liberty got cleaned out.
Yes.
I thank you for that.
You're welcome.
Hopefully it's a good start and the water will run nice and easily and do what it's supposed to do.
Yeah, I went actually out there, it wasn't a heavy, heavy storm, but I went out there and looked at the water coming through to that storm drain, and then it runs across to the other storm drain, and it was, it was flowing. So, as if we have a heavy rain this coming Thursday, hopefully.
That'll be a good test.
It'll be a good thing and we'll check it out.
When I originally asked for that to be cleaned out, I also asked for no dumping sign to be put up over there. Because people like to dump their garbage there, leaves, brush, so can we get a no dumping sign up there?
The, yes, we can. Part of the issue that we found is that some of that brush that was being dumped back there is on their own properties. It's not in the village green area, according to the building inspector, when he looked at the maps and trying to find, you know, logistics between where their property ends and where the green area or easement starts, so.
So when it rains, all their trash goes into the.
No, no, it shouldn't, if they're throwing it in the easement, then that's a problem. But what I had seen, it was off the bank quite a bit, and it was just under the set of trees that runs up, runs up the hill.
Right.
So, but if it's in there, trust me, we'll, we'll, you know, we'll knock on their door.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
You answered about pickleball, I'm very happy about that, thank you.
You're welcome.
The school board elections, they were two weeks ago. I see school board signs all over town.
Yeah, I, I had reached out to those individuals personally and asked them to pick them up. Now, they might not know where they are, but I did mention a few of them afterwards. But if, I'll drive around again tomorrow and between DPW and our, and our building inspectors, we'll, we'll yank up the signs.
Right, I mean, you know how much a sign costs.
Yeah, I know.
There's a lot of them out there.
Yep.
To put it down, you take it up, simple, it's an easy fix.
You know what happened, I mean, I got a feeling what happened is, like, the one I saw happened to be Brian.
They're all Brian.
But I'm sure, you know, they're not, he didn't probably put them out there, he probably had somebody put them out there, and maybe they said they were gonna pick them up. So, I reached out and the other day, so, give a couple of days to get that.
So, what you need to do is ask Brian to send a mass email out. Anybody who picked up the sign for me and put it out, please go pick it up. It's an easy fix, it's not that hard.
Nope.
Put it down, you take it up, that's just me though. The street sweeper, is it fixed?
It was, and it has another hydraulic issue, and it's going down to Long Island, I believe, is it tomorrow, Chris?
Yes.
So it's going down to Long Island tomorrow for that and some just general maintenance. So we should have it back by the end of the week is our hope.
Okay, so just my personal opinion, I'm not attacking the DPW, they do a wonderful job, I'm not saying that. What I'm saying is, you hired a new building inspector a few weeks ago, right? He only has four hours a week?
Eight.
Eight hours. So, what does he do for four hours?
A lot.
Okay, so, maybe, just maybe, just throwing it out there, give him a notice, have him drive around the village. When you see people that all the time, it could be the landscapers, it could be the regular residents. When they cut their grass, they throw it into the street, right? Where's that grass go?
Down the storm drain.
Is that good for the sewer?
Is it good, well, it's the storm drain, but it's not good, not good for anything, right?
So, maybe we could have that person drive around and say, you know what? The street sweeper is down, it's been down for a while now. Please help us out and do not throw your grass into the street. I come down my street, the bottom of the hill is disgusting, from the same people cutting their grass, throwing it into the street. Now, when you speak to them, the attitude is, the street sweeper picks it up. Maybe is that why the street sweeper's always broke, the cleaning up everybody's garbage?
Yeah, no.
I'm just saying, I don't know, but you know what?
You know, it's, it's like the same people, if they're mowing their own lawns, or if it's a landscaper, then we gotta chase them down.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
It's like in the wintertime when people are shoveling and they throw the snow back into the street after you, after you come by with your plows.
I understand that, but.
Why are you doing that? That doesn't make any sense either, right? So, I hear you.
We're in financial difficulties, you give them a notice, you say the next time you're getting fined. You bring money into the village, okay?
We have to check our codes to make sure it covers binding.
What's that?
We would have to check our codes to make sure that if something can be enforced. If there's nothing in our codes that says specifically you cannot put your grass, blow your grass like clippings into the curb line, we cannot find people. We have to look at what our code says.
We'll check our property maintenance and see if it's something we can do.
Okay, sure.
I believe there was a thing in there about no brush or grass in the streets, like people put the trees in the street when they cut them.
Yeah.
I believe that's in the code and it requires, I don't think anybody ever got any.
Again, I'm not an attorney, I don't have the codebook in front of me, this is something we can look into to see if it's an enforceable act.
Yeah, I mean, there's a lot of people, they, they love their lawns, so, you know, they take their tree limbs or whatever they're cutting and they stick them on the curb line, which I get. Because, you know, depending on the time of, you know, we're supposed to go out there a particular week, and everybody is getting used to just putting stuff out there, so we're trying to keep up with that. Because I do it too, you know, I'm cleaning out a bed that I hadn't touched, I have leaves, now I got them in a bag. And when they go out, they pick them up and I just, you know, when I know they're coming, we just put them out there. But, yeah, we'll check that, that's not a, we'll check on that.
Okay, one last thing.
Yep.
So, I walk every day, I see a lot of stuff. So, I walk from Vern Allen all the way down to the end. So, when you're leaving Vern Allen, heading to Newcastle, on the right-hand side where the dog waste is, okay? There's no bags there. Everything is gone. Bag holder, everything.
The holder's gone?
Everything's gone. So I say to the young man who's cutting the grass that day, could you just let them know that we're missing the bags here? And his response to me is, well, that's the second one that's been stolen, we're not putting it back up. So, where do you think the poop is gonna go?
Well, that was an inappropriate answer.
Okay.
Because there will be one put back up, and unfortunately, someone has a thing for a dog waste station, so. You know, maybe they'll get tired and maybe the, the rock will fill up with these things and they'll have no place else to put them. We're gonna put them up.
Okay, that's all.
Yeah.
Thank you, and I'm not attacking the DPW.
Again.
Do we need cameras up? I mean, it's, it's street signs and now it's.
I'm sorry?
I said, do we need cameras up? It's street signs and now it's the dog poop?
We are working on cameras for, for the three parks. So we had, we're taking our first priority from years ago when the flagpole was damaged at the memorial park, is that we're working on that. We have the plans for the camera, the locations for the camera, we've met with, what's her name? Crown Castle, company's changed names like three times, but it's Crown Castle. To basically, we need a fiber run up Washington, make a left into the park, and then end it in our waterworks building, and then we'll be lit, and our police department will have access to these cameras and see what's going on. And we have the same plan for Vern, and we have the same plan for Woodfield, and it's just absolutely crazy. I mean, we had an excavator down there while we were doing work and cleaning out something, and kids blew out all the windows with rocks. Then they dented the trim, so it was all covered by insurance, but the darn thing was out of commission for, you know, between not being able to use it, getting the insurance and all that good stuff, it was several, several weeks, if not a month and a half or so, maybe more. So that was down. Then we had kids driving either ATVs or vehicles on Avron Boulevard next to the parking lot for Vern Allen Park. They created ruts. So we're gonna put up six-by-six columns, put a chain, and make sure that it's, you know, hopefully protected, to not jump into curbs. So what do they do? They come down and they start axing the six-by-six posts. I mean, it, it's, you know, and if people see something, please just say something. We've had, we've done some stuff that, you know, we're sitting and waiting to see, but we haven't had the right timing, and it just, it's a nuisance, and it's a, it's disgusting at the end of the day. And if we would catch whoever did it, then, you know, prosecution would be done. Go ahead, go ahead, Michael. You haven't had a chance.
My presence on Three Mark Street, resolutions zero zero six seven about the generators. Tom, I know you've saved us a lot of money by returning that generator to renting a week, and you guys relocated the generator, right?
Yeah.
What's this generator for?
These two generators are, the generator that we moved is specifically for the sewer plant. So if we lose power, it stays up.
Sure.
Right? These two generators are to keep this building up during a power outage. And the same thing for, for the DPW building. Because this building in an emergency should be used, right?
Yes.
And it doesn't have a, it doesn't have a generator, and it should, right? And DPW should because they're, they're potentially working twenty-four by seven, sleeping down there with their bunks and whatever else. So, that's, that's the plan. Our police department.
So we're purchasing two, two new generators?
Two new.
Is that, that's not grants or anything?
Yes, it's a grant.
Oh, well, you get twenty thousand dollars, I think, right?
Eighty-two.
Oh, eighty-two.
Is what we're putting it in for.
Is that, is that, oh, that's gonna cover the cost of the generators?
Yes, I got quotes, and that would, you know, cover the two, cover the two. The only thing we're gonna be doing in-house is the concrete pad that we mentioned.
Right.
You know, it'll set some of that cost. Alright, Evan?
Just to bring back what you were talking about with the event, wasn't going on with parks, that's why I brought up the lights. And after dusk. Because right now, when I walk at night, there's stuff going down, down in those parks, every night. Now, school's getting out, I would maybe hold off on these lights until you get those cameras. You're not gonna wanna put lights up down there, it's just gonna attract more nonsense.
Well, the one thing that we need to put back up there is the security light that was on the pole. Yeah, by the ba-, the bathroom light is working. The thing that we could do is, I think the timer's been modified, but for the old-fashioned light poles that run through there, we could activate those and keep them on later at night as well. I think they were adjusted down.
Putting those lights up on the pickleball court until we get down.
Yeah.
Because you're gonna wanna know what's going on down there. Especially if nobody's playing pickleball and those lights are on. What they case when the lights go on or off?
Yeah, maybe we just leave them on and that's a good little security thing too. I mean, they're all LED, you know, we're, we're getting a decent, actually a discount or a credit from O and R because we are upgrading everything to the LED down there. So, it's a good point, I mean, you know, we could sit down there all day, all night, and then drive away, and then boom. So we need the cameras, that's a big thing, and see if we can get that out of the money from, from that grant.
How's it with Brian, I know he's not here. Do we have any statistics from the carnival? I know there was an arrest made, a couple of fights going on. Do we know, have any statistics?
I'm not aware of any fights. I mean, I'm aware of a disturbance, and some things that were said, there were no arrests made. Nobody pressed any particular charges. And what was supposedly said, no one, no one could collaborate the story or say it was true between the two, the young kids and that guy supposedly in his thirties. But he was stopped, he was pulled over, he was checked, but no one wanted to press any charges on either side.
It was blown out in proportion of social media.
Yeah, a lot of stuff got twisted along the way. So, yeah, and I think the chief also responded on the police Facebook page to just, you know, calm the waters a little bit, that it was a little bit, whatever word you wanna use, exaggerated or blown up, so, just to straighten it out. Yeah. But overall, that was the only, only thing. We don't normally, you know, bring an extra patrol for that, we don't do the overtime thing. The Knights are very, very strict with that company or any company that comes in. I, I talk to Vinnie on a daily basis, and, yeah, he was, you know, they, they, they're really strict. And it's, and it's really, and it shows too, because everybody that went there, they had a, a good turnout despite some of the weather stuff that was going on. But, you know, overall, they were very, very happy with the turnout, and, you know, money that they raised, it'll put back into the community. So, kudos to the Knights. They're a good job. Anyone else? Okay, could I have a motion to adjourn into executive session?
Motion to adjourn.
To discuss personnel issues. Have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks very much, everyone. Thank you, have a good night. You too.